Call to order. Mrs. Rhonda Odom. After the superintendent, okay. Dr. Searcy, if you will give us your statement, and then we will have Mrs. Odom to come to the podium.
Okay. My statement is as follows. August 3, 2020, in accordance with Section 200.065 in Chapters 1010 and 1011 of the Florida statutes, I am submitting the tentative balanced budget for fiscal year 2020-2021, and I'm recommending the proposed millage to be levied. On July 23, 2020, you approved the tentative budget and millage for advertising. The purpose of today's public hearing is to approve the 2020-2021 proposed tentative budget and proposed millage rate, and to set the date, time, and place of the final public hearing on the budget. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Searcy. At this time, Mrs. Odom, Chief Financial Officer, if you would please come.
And I believe you all have a hard copy of the handouts.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're just going to go briefly through them. Since we don't have any public here, I don't expect to take too much of your time today. As Dr. Searcy stated, we're here today to present, discuss, and adopt the tentative millage rates and the tentative budgets for the 2020-21 school year. The first thing that I'm required by law to discuss with you all is the, to be in compliance with Florida Truth and Millage, is the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate that it would take to bring into the district the same amount of tax revenue that we received last year without taking into effect any new construction. It is applied to the current year tax base, and that rollback rate for us is 5.949 mills. Our 2020-2021 millage rate is 5.8970 mills. So this is an increase of 0.4201 mills from the rollback rate. And on page two of the millage handout, you'll see that it's an increase of 0.028 actual mills from last year's millage rate. And this entire increase is attributable to the rates set by the legislature and our required local effort and in a prior period millage funding adjustment. And one of the things that we have to look at to determine whether we're having a proposed tax increase or just a budget hearing is seeing how much funds will come in from the new millage rate. And it'll bring in roughly 107.3% of the funds that were generated from last year's 5.869 mills. You'll see on page three of the handout that if a property owner has a property value of $100,000, he will see a slight increase in the taxes owed to the school district of $2.10. And as I said, these millage rates were set by the state, and we had to levy them in order to receive our FEFP funds, which is roughly $60 million. And each school board that participates in the state allocation of fund through the FEFP have to levy the amount of millage set for the required local effort and the prior period funding. Your next handouts, we're just going to go through a few little informational handouts. The next is a comparison of the Putnam County tax values, millage, and revenue. And you'll see that, I want to show you the decline in millage rates and revenue generated from 2007-8, which is the year that we all remember, to the present budget year of 2020-2021. And that's hard to say. Our millage rate has declined by 1.597 mills in that period of time, and our decline in property tax revenue is over $2 million. Valuations are on the rise, but due to the reduction in our required local effort set by the legislature and the reduction in our capital from 2.0 mills to 1.50 mills, we are collecting less in tax dollars. The next handout is the general fund collection of property taxes. And that's just an analysis. As you all know, we're required to budget to receive 96% collection rate in the general fund. And we, ever since I've been here, we've always collected well over our budgeted rate, except for one year in 2015-2016. We had a rough year and only collected 98.89%, so we were down over $200,000. You'll see in the current year, we're a little low for 2019-20, but when I printed this out, we had not received the delinquent tax distribution and distribution number 12, which is for the sales tax, certificate sales. I received an email this morning that we are going to be receiving that money on Wednesday. So we'll be back on track. Instead of being $51,000 down, we'll be up over $72,000. So what that'll amount to is we've collected over 100% of the 96% we're required to budget. So that's a good thing.
That's good.
Yes, ma'am. Your next handout is just an analysis of capital dollars, because while general fund goes down, capital does also. And I did that from 2007-8 through the current year. And in the current year, our tax base did go up. So we're projected at more capital millage dollars than last year, but we're still over $800,000 less than we received in capital millage dollars in 2007-8. We no longer receive the PICO New Construction Fund, so that's another half million dollars less than we received in 2007-8. And our PICO Special Maintenance Funds have dwindled down, and they're down 1.2 million from 2007-8. So overall, we've seen a decline in capital funds of $2.6 million for this year compared to what we received back in 2007-8. The next item, since we've been discussing millage and tax revenue, is the handout that you saw at the advertising meeting, and that was in the newspaper, and that's the Notice of Tax for School Capital Outlay. It was in Wednesday's paper. And we are required by law to advertise how we plan to spend the 1.5 mills for capital outlay purposes. Just because it's on there doesn't mean we have to do everything on the list. But if it's not listed, we can't spend on anything that's not on the list. So it's basically a plan. And the TRIM guidelines do specify the categories and language that can appear on this advertisement. Your next handout, I want you to see, broken down, how we plan to spend that capital projects millage budget. And that 1.5 mills will bring in just over $7 million in funds. And we do fund our maintenance department from it. And we also give some money to schools and departments for capital outlay needs. We utilize flexibility that's in the statute to pay a portion of our property insurance. And I think I told you at the advertising meeting, we pay over $1.8 million, but the statute's very strict on what portions of it you can. And so it's only about 500 and something thousand that we can pay for out of capital, and the rest is paid for out of the general fund. We pay our current year portion on the master purchase agreement for the buses that we did a couple of years back and the energy retrofit loan. Transportation did ask for two new buses this year, and they asked for a vehicle for transportation. Maintenance asked for a vehicle, and media asked for a vehicle. So we put all those things in that ad, and I put them in the budget. And we still have an additional 800 million, 800,000. I wish it was 800 million. New money that can be used for remodeling renovation needs for the year over what maintenance can provide through the dollars and staff provided to them. And the next ad is the budget summary ad that was also in the newspaper. And that's a one-page compression of our budget summarized by fund type, revenue source, and expenditure function. It was in Wednesday's paper, and it's also provided in the white notebook, line by line, call center by call center. And it's in your mailroom and at your convenience. If you want to get it, it's about this thick and look it over. But at any time, you can request that I send you a printout of any school, any department, or the entire budget. And I can send it to you via email, or I can put it in your box for you to have a copy. But as always, from this particular handout, as I did at the meeting to advertise, I always call your attention to a couple of things. You'll see that in the first column of the general fund, because that's the fund I concentrate the most on, because it's our operational fund. You'll see our beginning fund balance on July 1, 2020, was $10,751,345.06, and that our estimated June 30, 2021, fund balance is $4,706,089.20. Your next handout will show you how that is broken out. Though it sounds really good to have a $10 million fund balance at June 30. It's got reserve for project balances within it, and those are state and local projects that have strings attached. And that was over $3.6 million of that $10 million. We also have encumbrances. That's purchase orders that were put on but have not been finalized yet. But the money's already spoken for. That was $614,000. We have a reserve for inventory. So that's not a cash item, but it's items that we have in stock. And that's 368,000. We've got our 3% mandated unreserved fund balance, $2.5 million. And at the end of the year, the funds that roll back to the general fund pot after all revenue came in and all expenditures had been done, another $3.5 million. So that amounts to the 10.7 million I was talking about. And you'll see also that our proposed ending fund balance is a lot less than our beginning fund balance, as it is every year. Carryover project balances and carryover encumbrances are taken out of the projected ending fund balance as it's assumed that we'll spend out all the carryover projects. And even if some of them didn't enroll to the next year, there's still money that we don't have access to because they have strings attached. And we expect to also pay for the goods and services that are currently sitting in a purchase order encumbrance. So those two figures alone reduced our expected ending fund balance by $4.3 million. And the projected 630, 2020, fund balance is $4.7 million. And I put aside money for the McKay Scholarship so that when we do get that reduction in our FEFP funds, we won't be scrambling to find the money. It usually comes in the last FEFP calculation. One that hit us this year was a new one, and that was the Family Empowerment Scholarship. And it was larger than the McKay Scholarship, so I set aside $450,000 for that.
Mrs. Odom?
Yes, ma'am.
And the McKay Scholarship, these are the monies that go to the charter schools that follow the students?
Well, not to charter schools, no, ma'am. I mean, we have to send money to the charter schools, too, and I have that in the budget. But these are like public school scholarships, and I believe the Family Empowerment Scholarship is. And that's a new one that was written into statute. So the money, yes, is our Putnam County students, but they've chosen to go to a private school or something along that line.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I've got...
Named after Buddy McKay, and he had a handicapped child.
That's true. And usually, I can get a list closer to the time that this comes that will give me a heads up on how many. But we've been running 325 to 375 every year on McKay scholarships. And like I said, Family Empowerment was brand new, and I didn't find out about it until May. And I didn't have that money budgeted for this past year. But we rocked through it and everything, and so I set some aside this year for assuming it's going to be, I budgeted about $25,000 more than they took from us in last fiscal year because they've increased it for this year. They're slowly billing it up, and they sort of told us how much more they're offering out this year. So I wanted to put a little bit extra buffer in there. I've also got contingency reserve for FTE shortfall. Because, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I wanted to ask this before. I forget when we were talking about the McKay Scholarship. And that money is used every year?
Yes, ma'am. There's always some students that receive the McKay Scholarship, and I don't ever find out until close to the time that they withhold the money from it. Because they tell...
So it would cost $375,000. We give that money for kids in Putnam County that go to private schools in Putnam County?
Yes, but we don't...
I mean, they've got one private school.
I'm not sure who all they are. Evelyn Langston used to provide the list to me, and I'll get Andy Burnett to give it to me at a later date. Because I know they're not all ESE students, but the majority of them are. But the money, they've told us we're going to get it based on the number of students in Putnam County. But just like we have to turn around and pay the charter schools their share because the kids do not come to us and we directly pay them, the state pulls the money out of our pot, and the state pays for the McKay and the Family Empowerment.
Okay.
And until I knew that I could get a list of names and everything, it would just occur.
I don't, you know, I'm not interested in names. I was just wondering what schools it went to.
Yeah, well, for me, I was wanting the people so I could try to come up with an accurate count.
There's a variety of different places they could get access to.
It hasn't been under 325,000 in several years. So that one hasn't been increasing. The one, like I said, the new one is the one that took me by surprise.
Those schools were so bad.
Yeah, and in the next two or three years, they're going to steadily increase the amount of scholarships they're giving out for family empowerment. So that's something we'll have to keep an eye on. Not knowing, I always set aside a reserve in case we're declining again in enrollment, which we've been doing for many years. But there's a new level of uncertainty, not knowing how many will make the decision to homeschool, and we'll get no funds for that and everything. So I've set aside $400,000 if we have a shortfall of FTE and $400,000 if we have a proration of funds because I still do believe that after the election, they'll come back and they'll reduce us. You know, that's been rumor all along. And we know the collections are way off of what they projected for their revenue because of all this. So, you know, knock on wood, that won't happen. But we'll have the money available, some set aside in case that does happen so that we won't have to come back and face some tough decisions and everything. I've set aside the 3% mandated unreserved fund balance, $2.5 million. And the unreserved right now is a very small amount, $123,000. That's the lowest it's been in several years. But we, you know, we did, we've been building up the fund balance. We gave out raises last year, had to budget for them this year. The cost of Florida retirement went up to 10% that we have to contribute this year, as well as the employees paying 3% on their own. And that was an increase in the general fund of over $700,000 of additional expenses. And we didn't even get enough increased flexible funds to pay for the retirement. So, but we'll work on building the fund balance back up again. The next handout is strictly, again, for informational purposes. I wanted to give you my Excel version of the general fund. That's where I start the process. It shows you the estimated revenues for the year, transfers in from the Capital Projects Fund for funding our maintenance department and for property insurance flexibility, our carryover reserves. It shows all the budgeted expenditures by categories. And I thought you might like to see, you know, how much is salary and benefits, how much is state categoricals, how much are going to the charter schools, operational costs, school discretionary dollars, district initiative, fund balance categories. Over to the far right, once you get to the expenditure size.
Before we go there, Mrs. Odom, 344 lottery dollars? And it's nothing?
Yes, ma'am. We had it in the initial budget, but it was a very small amount, about $30,000.
That's a shame, all those tickets people are buying.
When the governor signed the budget, finally signed it after all those weeks and a couple of months, I first thought that he didn't change the FEFP at all. But he did take out the lottery dollars, which is the discretionary lottery dollars and then the school recognition. There will not be any school recognition dollars this year because no schools received a grade last year. So that was about, overall, between the two categories, about $500,000 he took out. Only $10,000 to $20,000, that was discretionary lottery dollars, affected the overall general fund flexible budget because the school recognition goes to the schools, and they didn't get a chance to get a grade. So, you know, they don't get that.
But they've really been pushing those commercials about lottery money go into education.
And I can understand the grade, the recognition part. But to take the lottery dollars...
I guess it was such, it has gotten down to such a small amount. And I know there's lottery dollars that go, you know, to students getting bright future scholarships and things like that. So some lottery dollars does still go to education, but not ours. To the students to, you know, get the scholarships and everything.
It's just a shell game.
No, when I first started doing this, we received enough to pay for the deans, the guidance counselors at every school.
It was wonderful.
We had enough lottery dollars for that. And now last year, the most we got was $30,000.
And not making in even more.
But it's turned into a shell game.
It truly has. The next thing is just...
I'm going to quit playing it.
The next thing, I want you to see an analysis of our base student allocation. And that's our flexible state funds. It went up exactly $40 over last year. And we're receiving $156.02 more per student in BSA funds than we received this time 13 years ago, 2007-8. So that's 3.7% more. But that is so far below the inflation factor from 13 years ago. So, you know, we all still complain about the base student allocation. We wish it was so much more because that is the flexible source of funds. And if we ever do get to give raises and stuff, that's usually where it comes from. But it just has never recouped from 2007-8. I can remember, you know, we were getting good increases every year. We were able to do nice raises every year, and it's just a thing of the past now. The next one-pager is an analysis of our FTE. That's our number of students. And you'll see that our FTE is still, we're looking at a decline over last year, an expected decline over last year of 43 FTE. Since 2002-2003, I've been keeping up with this a lot longer. We have declined by over 1,800 students. And that's an average of 100 students a year in the last 18 years. And as I mentioned, I've set aside a reserve of $400,000 for that in case the students do not come. And I truly hope that's enough of a set aside this year with everything going on. I want you to see a history of fund balance in Putnam County. And that's the general fund fund balance. That's the one that is looked at every year by the auditors. And the top part of the handout is Putnam County School District. And in the middle is the average financial condition ratios. And when I say history of fund balance, there's a total fund balance, but that includes inventory and state projects. Just like you remember how much that big amount we had left over at the end of the year for state projects, over $3 million. And then the auditors say there's a financial condition ratio, and that's the money that's truly available, that's your assigned and unassigned fund balance. So we ended 1920 with a 7.24% financial condition ratio. And the total amount of that was $6 million. And the state's always a year or two behind. So the last year, they've done a financial condition ratio, was 2017-18, and it was just published in March of 2020. The state average is 9.51%. I am happy to say that this is the first year there's been zero school districts with a ratio below the 3% that you're required to have. Last year, there were two, you know, three years in a row, there were five school districts that didn't have that 3% fund balance that you're required to have. So this just sort of shows how we've been doing. You know, at one point in time, we were, especially 2007 and '08, after they cut us, we were spending more than we were taking in. We worked on that. We've got that under control. You will see we had a slight decrease this year. And again, that was because we had been building up fund balance. We gave out the raises, which everybody so deeply deserved and everything. So we'll again start building back on the fund balance again.
And the 3% that we mandatorily set aside and you compile that statewide, it's a massive amount of money the state hands you, and then they say you can't spend it in case they need it. They take it back.
Yeah, if you go below 3%, then you have to do a plan. You have to, the board has to approve the plan to get us back to 3%. It has to go to the state. If you go below 2%, that's when the state comes in and takes over and says, "We can do it better than you can." We're going to tell you what you have to cut from your budget. And that's happened in counties before. So we won't get to that point. The final little handout that we have is just called "How Much Is Our Budget?" And it's strictly, again, for informational purposes. It takes our total proposed budget, because you remember from the handout, with NEFECT, it's over $180 million. It subtracts out items that are in more than one place. And what I mean by that, let's say that the transfer to fund the maintenance department is an expenditure in the Capital Projects Fund as a transfer out, and they code it as an expenditure. And in the general fund, it's a revenue coming in as a transfer in. So that $3.6 million is in two different fund sources. So I like to pull that out. Let's say health insurance is another one. Any fund that a person is paid from, they've got their $4,500 board contribution, help as an expenditure in that fund. And then at the end of each month after our payroll, we transfer that dollar, those dollars into the group insurance fund as a revenue in. And then we pay out of the group insurance fund, we pay, you know, health insurance. So those expenditures are in two different funds. And so I like to pull that out. After I do all of that, I take out the NEFECT grants as that funding belongs to NEFECT, and we are just their fiscal agent. And then to get down to, so you can determine what our true district recurring revenue is, I take out the carryover fund balance and just carry that, you know, bring that $188 million budget down to recurring revenues that belong to the district of $107 million. So that's really all the handouts I have. So before we do go to the roll call vote, are there any questions for me from the board members?
I don't know how you do it, it's all I've got to say.
Superintendent or the public that are here?
That's why she's been the president of the Florida School Finance Director.
Well, she needs to be president of the world.
Oh, no, no, ma'am. I just like numbers, that's all.
I don't know about the world because I've had to deal with Rhonda. She can get on to you.
Would not like that at all. So if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Charlie.
Just commend you for the great job, for having the foresight to know how to make all of this happen.
I appreciate that. And one of the, I guess, one of the things that really is important to me is setting aside those reserves because when I was in the outer office and it would come to this time, my predecessor would always come out to me and Ms. Bates and say, "We've just been cut half a million dollars or a million dollars. You got to look at budgets. We got to see where we can cut." So I learned from that. And I try to do set asides in our fund balance so that when the cuts do come, we can take it from that instead of going to schools and departments or even having to let people go or whatever. So it's worked out well. So it's worked out well. There's been a year or two that I didn't get quite close enough, and we had to reduce fund balance, but it certainly helps by having those reserves. And I've got a team that works with me and allows me to set aside, you know, those reserves without trying to pull them out for additional expenditures and everything. So it takes a team to do this. I do appreciate it, though.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Douglas, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Thank you, Rhonda.
No problem.
And Madam Chair, if at this time you could ask for a motion in a second for item C1.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion for item C1 that we approve.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we accept item C1, and second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. Are we ready to vote?
Charlie, do we need to read what the statement is?
Yes, ma'am, I believe.
It would be good.
They do want to write out some lists.
Where is it?
Okay, C1 is tentative required local effort millage rate of 3.627 mils.
David made the motion, and I second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Buckles, motioned by Mr. Buckles, and seconded by Mrs. Crawford, that we accept item C1. And we have no discussion? All in favor?
Wait. Oh.
We have to do a roll call.
Okay.
District one?
Aye.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And district five?
Yes. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the tentative prior period funding adjustment millage rate of 0.022 mils.
I second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Crawford that we accept the tentative prior period funding adjustment millage rate of 0.022 mils, and seconded by Mr. David Buckles.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approved number three, tentative discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mils.
I second.
Been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we accept item number three, approved tentative discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mils, and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And district five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item 64, tentative capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mils.
I'll second that. It's been motioned by Mr. Bud McKinnis that we approve tentative capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mils, and seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And district five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I motion that we accept C5, tentative total millage rate of 5.897 mils, which is 7.318% above the rollback rate.
I second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we approve the tentative total millage rate of 5.897 mils, which is 7.318% above the rollback rate.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve C6, tentative general fund budget of $100,408,162.79.
I second that.
It's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we approve item C6 to approve the tentative general fund budget of $100,408,162.79.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And district five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item C7, tentative debt service funds budget of $114,192.35.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned by Mr. Bud McKinnis that we approve item C7, debt service funds budget of $114,192.35.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt C8, tentative capital projects funds budget of $11,187,834.20.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Ms....
I'll second that.
It's been motioned by Mr. Bud McKinnis that we approve item C8, the tentative capital projects fund budget of $11,186,834.20.
And I believe that was $187,000.
That's correct.
Okay, I need to repeat that. The capital project fund budget of $11,187,834.20.
And that was seconded by Ms. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
No.
No.
It was Pickens.
Pickens.
Okay, Ms. Pickens. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt C9, tentative special revenue funds budget of $17,238,429.04.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept approved item C9, tentative special revenue funds budget of $17,238,429.04.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And district five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item C10, tentative internal service funds budget of $34,085,239.
I'll second that.
Been motioned by Mr. Bud McKinnis that we accept item C10, the tentative internal service funds budget of $34,085,239.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item C11, tentative permanent funds budget of $131,524.84.
Second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we approve item C11, tentative permanent budget, funds budget of $131,524.84.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item C12, tentative enterprise funds budget of $25,096,507.87.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned by Mr. Bud McKinnis that we accept item C12, tentative enterprise funds budget of $25,096,507.87.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And district five?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item C13, total district tentative budget in its entirety of $188,261,890.09.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we approve item C13, total district tentative budget in its entirety of $188,261,890.09.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes. Madam Chair, we need a motion to advise the property appraiser on when the final budget hearing will be. It should be at the bottom of the sheet.
I make a motion that we advise the property appraiser's office as soon as Ms. Odom and district staff can.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we advise the property appraisals office as soon as possible via Mrs. Odom, and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, or hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
And just for that purpose, too, I view it as a roll call vote.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Okay, district one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes. Do we, did it need to say that on September 15th?